Bring them up to me so I can keep tally of what's going on. So in about five minutes, we'll get started.
Hey, how are you doing?
Good.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Anyway, we're gonna get started, I have quorum now, and so, welcome to the Carmel Valley Community Special Planning Board Meeting for August the eighth, two thousand and thirteen. As announced in the special meeting agenda, tonight's meeting is to listen to a presentation by One Kilroy, Kilroy and One Paseo relative to the community-wide benefits proposed by the project One Paseo. The presentation, I think, is all pretty much gonna be video. There are some speaker slips in the back. I did ask for those to be brought up to the front for those people that anticipate speaking. After the presentation, the speaker slips are either for or against. If you wanna change your position after the presentation, just let me know, and if I call your name, then I will change your position for you. So that being said, the presentation may take about half hour, forty-five minutes. Then I'm gonna turn it over to the board for some quick questions, and I would use most of the time for the community to ask questions as well. So we do need to be outta here by nine-thirty, so that the video staff can break this down and be outta here by ten o'clock, or we all turn into a pumpkin. So that being said, after the presentation, I'll probably have about a five-minute break, so that we can sort of comprehend what we had, and I can talk with the board and set the meeting agenda for the rest of the evening. So that being said, I don't know who's taking it over from, John, you're gonna take it over?
Yes.
So the meeting, one more, one more thing. I need to take attendance, so that, if we can take attendance, then those people that are not here are excused.
Rick Newman. Nancy Novak. Holly Kahn. Debbie Lockhang. Christopher Moore. Stephen Ross. Frisco White is here. Ann Harvey. Steve Davidson. Laura Kopic. Manjeet Ranu. John Tedesco. Victor Manoshekin. Alan Kishani. Christian Kluus. Brian Brady.
And for the record, those that are recusing, please be recused. Yes, please take. Thank you very much, John, now the floor is yours.
I don't know, you direct the question to that gentleman.
Is there a way of turning the mic off here? I don't wanna have a conversation recorded.
Good evening. My name is John Leopard, and this evening, my colleagues and I are excited to have this opportunity to share with you some new ideas and project features that will enhance Carmel Valley. To start with, let me say that my wife and I purchased our first home in Carmel Valley back in nineteen eighty-seven, and we have lived in Carmel Valley ever since. Overall, my extended family, which includes my in-laws, my brothers and sister-in-laws, my children, my niece, my nephews, collectively, we own ten homes in Carmel Valley. That is, if you include my maverick daughter, who happens to live in Pacific Islands Ranch. Besides being a twenty-six-year Carmel Valley resident, I am also a civil engineer with Leopard Engineering Corporation. Personally, I'm very proud to be a part of the design team for the One Paseo project. It is rewarding to work on a project that will actually complete the vision that was originally laid out in the very first North City West community plan. And that personally has extreme significance for me. My in-laws, who have been continuous property owners here in Carmel Valley since nineteen sixty-five, actually contributed funds to pay for the cost of the first community plan. As a civil engineer and a land-use professional, it is particularly gratifying to be able to work on projects on your own backyard. Consequently, as a long-time resident of Carmel Valley, I too have a vested interest in the quality of life here in Carmel Valley. So, why this presentation, and why tonight? Frankly, it's been a long time since our last presentation in front of the board, but we want you to know that a lot has taken place since the last presentation. We have been listening to the community's input, and we have received tons of your feedback. So with all of this input, we have been working hard to zero in on the issues and to develop some solutions that could be implemented by the project. This evening is an opportunity. It's an opportunity to provide the board, and all of you in the audience, with a visual picture of what Carmel Valley could look like. Tonight is not about the project. Instead, it is how One Paseo fits into the fabric of the community. Tonight is about community. We will share with you some enhancements that will provide the connections to bring Carmel Valley together, and thus, will complete the vision that was set forth in the very first community plan. This will result in both Carmel Valley and the project being even better than previously envisioned. This presentation tonight will consist of several professionals describing various facets of the updated project proposal. While we're directing the presentation to the planning board, we've provided the screens on each side, and the video camera in the middle, to be able to zoom in on the slides, so that the audience can see up close what the board is seeing. Following the presentation, we anticipate that there will be time for the board to ask their qualif, any clarifying questions. First up in our presentation is Michael Steppner. Michael is a former planning director for the city of San Diego, having worked for the city for over twenty-seven years, starting back in nineteen seventy-one, before there was a North City West. He also served as the city architect. He has served as both professor and dean of San Diego's first school of architecture, the New School of Architecture and Design. He has a variety of other credentials and pedigrees, but most importantly, he was involved in the drafting of the original community plan for North City West, and I will let him explain. Michael?
Thanks, John. Good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm looking for the, thank you. As John said, my name is Michael Steppner, and I, in a past life, as he indicated, I held various positions in the San Diego City Planning Department. I was fortunate to work with some people in this room today on the original North City Community Plan in nineteen seventy-five. And I also worked on the precursor to the North City Community Plan, which was the new community study that was done a few years earlier. Then Mayor Pete Wilson and the city council directed that a study be undertaken that would look how to develop, how best to develop the North City area. This was the response to a series of subdivisions that had been approved, that would have made this area look like a model prototype of the San Fernando Valley in Los Angeles. A continuous sprawl of development without community centers, or a focus, or a way of making a community very walkable. The new community study looked at how to plan for complete neighborhoods. It was based on topography, the preservation of open space, the creation of neighborhoods, neighborhoods, not subdivisions. Town and neighborhood centers that had shopping, that had schools, that had parks, and a neighborhood that had a town center, and that was less reliant on the car. The new community study and the North City Community Plan were some of the foundations that we now call new urbanism and smart growth. The North City Community Plan proposed a series of complete neighborhoods, each with a neighborhood center that included a park, an elementary school, and a neighborhood commercial center. The plan was to be implemented by a series of precise plans, and it envisioned a town center that would be the core of the community. Quoting from the plan, it said the planned town center should be the major unifying element of the entire community. A little history about why I'm here tonight. About eight months ago, I was at a presentation to a professional organization that I belong to, where Bob Little and Steve Scott presented the One Paseo Plan. At the end of the presentation, I made some comments about the project, some similar to the comments that the community has made, and some that reflected how I felt the project differed from what the community plan envisioned. I commented that One Paseo was just another isolated project plopped down in the last vacant parcel of the community, the part where the plan designated a town center. And it was plopped down, I can believe, as many of the previous projects were just plopped down. The, the school, the park, the shopping center, and the overly wide streets that don't move traffic very well, and make the pedestrian experience terrible. I commented that One Paseo should be the last, as the last remaining parcel, should do something more to connect the community and to implement the vision that was outlined in the community plan. Sometime after I made these comments, Steve Scott and Bob Little invited me to come out to their offices and tell them how I really felt about the project. I met with them, and I agreed that I would work with them to address some of my comments and my concerns, and some of the community's concerns as well. In addition to myself, I asked Frank Walden to join me, and you'll hear from Frank in a few moments. My comments were focused on the town center, as envisioned by the plan. The North City Community Plan, which is now the Carmel Valley Community Plan, recognized that a core area or town center should be the most intensively developed part of the community, a visible focus of the community from almost everywhere within the North City planning area. As part of the planning effort, as we approached, Frank and I approached looking at the project, we looked at examples of what was being done in other areas. This is actually how we looked at the community plan when we first started. We looked at master plan communities that were being proposed and developed in Reston, Virginia, Columbia, Maryland. We also were able to look at the early plans for the Disney Newtown Celebration, Florida, to see how people were thinking about how communities should develop. What we found in developing the community plan, the most important thing was to create a place for people, a community that people can be involved with and really find an ideal living arrangement and working arrangement. These are some of the examples that we looked at. A later example that we looked at, one that is, differs from One Paseo in many respects, was the Uptown District, which came much later. This is in Hillcrest in San Diego. And the reason I concluded this slide was because it is a project that is much like is being discussed today. It's one that is more than just a commercial project or a housing project, but one that took a site, a former Sears site of fifteen acres, that had gone away, and turned it into a project, an area, that really began to unify all of the Hillcrest area and reconnect neighborhoods that had long been separated by roads, by canyons, and by overly developed streets. This is, and this is the way we approached, Frank and I, in the later stages, looking at some of the projects. We wanted to look at the pro, at the area from the outside in. What really needed to be those elements that began to connect the community. The town center was envisioned as a complete community, civic and cultural core, by offering a location that would be the center of North City West. And the, and as the plan called for, the town center would be the major unifying element of the entire community. The town center would physically join the community together with an arrangement of landscape and distinct walkways, trails, paseos, and plazas that link the neighborhoods of Carmel Valley to one another and form a complete community. Within the core area, priorities should be given to the pedestrian. Extensive pedestrian walkways and bicycle systems must therefore be developed throughout the core area. The changes that you're going to hear about tonight, I believe, will begin to reconnect the community and elements in the core area as originally envisioned by the community plan. To begin to describe how we looked at the project, and some of the changes in detail, is Frank Walden. Frank is a principal of Skyport Studio, an urban design firm here in town, but Frank and I also have taught together, in fact, we'll be teaching together tomorrow night, at the New School of Architecture and Design. And I would like to turn it over to Frank and have him present some of those details that we looked at.
Thank you, Mike. Off to a good start. Okay. The reason I think I'm here with Mike tonight is because of a common interest that we formed, I think, something like thirty years ago in the late seventies. I was an intern at the City Planning Department, and there was a dialogue that was going on at the time, that was about how suburban areas and new towns that were developed at the time were, were taking, moving away from the kind of pedestrian qualities that were associated with, you know, the traditional American town and city and that sort of thing, and, and how could we develop plans that would, would bring that, that would ensure that and continue to bring that back as we continue to develop? This was a real influence on me as a young designer, and it actually ended up being, what I focused most of my career on was how to combine architecture and public space into places that really created, you know, human experiences. So, you know, and that, and that also ended up with, as Mike suggested, us getting back together and teaching at the New School of Architecture as we do now, where most of our, our emphasis is on teaching young architects, you know, how to design these kinds of experiences. We think this is incredibly important. One of the, the first things that we begin to think about is, is we study other places around the world, and places that work, that have pedestrian qualities. One of the favorite examples is this street in Barcelona called Ros Ramblas, sorry, which, which actually, you know, combines cars, people, commerce, bikers, and is really the social center and the gathering center, cultural focus of the entire community. Those kinds of experiences today are, are being built into new projects that are being proposed. Very often, those kinds of, those, those types of places are actually a source of inspiration, different places around Europe, because of the way they handle pedestrians. The, the biggest barrier that I think we have today to accomplish these goals, to reach this passion, is the perception that the streets we've created, the broad arterials, are not, are not gonna be walkable, that we can't make them walkable, we can't make them comfortable. And this is something that has to change. There are examples all over the country and all over the world of, of very busy streets that create community, that support pedestrian activity, and this is a big part of what we're gonna be talking to you about tonight. This is a project that, that I had the honor of working on in a place called Hoyt Street Yards, the Pearl District in Portland, and I included this because this, this is the next layer of what needs to be created. And what I mean by this is, in, in Hoyt Street Yards, the Pearl District, they pedestrianized the city streets, created a series of paseos and walkways, and in this particular project, I worked with a landscape architect, and we designed a project that combined architecture and public space to create essentially a living room for the community. And this had, this started with a street, and, and then it continued into the park and created plazas, you know, fountains, landscape walkways, and everything felt like it was part of a connected system from the city streets all the way through the project. And it's a place now where families gather, where you see kids, you see grandparents, you see dogs, you see everybody, you see community happening. And it starts at the streets that surround this area. So, the, back to where Mike started, I think the discussion of how does this get completed in Carmel Valley really starts with the big picture. So we have, we return to the big picture, and we, we started looking at how, as Mike said, we can connect the community. Today, you know, Carmel Valley is a, is a great community, it's got a great community spirit, it has wonderful amenities, parks, public spaces, but for the most part, these streets we're talking about, the experience is more dominated by cars and parking lots, and not the kind of things that I think were originally envisioned in terms of creating a town center community. So, we saw our first job was to try to make proposals that would get, would create that system and connect it to One Paseo, addressing the overall experience, the walker, the cyclist, the sports enthusiast, the driver, the driver as well. I mean, it's, it's an important experience when you come into a town center that it has a, that it has a gateway quality, and that pedestrians and bicyclists and all kind of can, can kind of share, you know, the city. So anyway, as we, as, as we kind of zero in on, from, you know, the core area into So, anyway, as we, as we kind of zero in on, from, you know, the core area into, you know, the town, the town center area, we start to look at how these surrounding streets and spaces can be developed to create this system of connectivity between things. And Delmar, excuse me, Delmar Heights Road is the first example, and it really, it's going to have residential on both sides of it, it's going to have a gateway quality. When Mike and I first went out there, we saw, there's a picture, as you can see up here, of two ladies pushing a stroller down the street, and, you know, we noted that this was what people were looking to do, but this is a very uncomfortable and unsafe environment for them. So, this, the idea that Delmar Heights Road can create this wonderful pedestrian boulevard that includes parkways, that separates pedestrians from the street, includes bike lanes, includes extensive landscaping to create safe walking environments, and even more important, a wonderful community experience. So, we're going to talk to you about Delmar Heights Road. As you turn the corner, one of the things we always tell our students is all streets are not the same. You have a different thing. Both the, both the existing center and One Paseo will create retail energy on both sides of the street. So, when we talk about creating a pedestrian quality street here, we're talking about something that really needs to be kind of pilot light of the community. It needs to be a source of energy, a place where people feel comfortable, and there's a lot going on, and it's a exciting place to be. So, then finally, to the south, there's an existing green belt, green trail, that creates, that brings this passive quality in bikers and walkers, and when you put all these things together, this starts to create a system that can create connections coming from the community. And then, the, a special street that actually starts with the experience on the surrounding streets, not within a project, becomes the main street, where special opportunities for pedestrian gathering and experience occur and connect from El Camino Real to Delmar Heights Road, and include gateways and green spaces, and pull the whole site together. Now, one of the other things that we talked about was, how do you accomplish that, that street on El Camino Real that brings all this energy to the community, and in fact, breaks down the sense of One Paseo being a project that you, that you enter into, that essentially creates, you know, events and concepts, it becomes a porous idea, it becomes something where the, the community and the project interconnect and activities occur. So, we proposed something called the Village Walk, and took the landscape area and, and created something called the String of Pearls, which is a series of public spaces, smaller public spaces for gathering and activities, you know, that are supported by the energy brought from One Paseo, and actually create places along the street that create a pleasant walkway. A couple of examples of this are, you know, the sketch vignette here shows the opening up of the corner and at Plaza Camino Real and, and Delmar Heights Road, and the creation of a pedestrian place there. That's not a place in a project, it's a place in the community. Another example, to go all the way to the end, one of the other observations we had is that you have a, a community center that is just, you know, a few, a few hundred yards from, from where One Paseo and all these things we're talking about is occurring, and it also needs to be connected. It shouldn't be a drive from, from one place to the other. So, we're proposing this idea of a gateway park that would actually be one of those pearls that would occur on that string, and we'll talk to you more about those as we go forward. Then, of course, a special street has special gathering areas, special places. And again, imagine the piazza, the town green, those kinds of things that are going to be part of this public system of streets that, that connect the community through the site. In addition to that, there are a number of smaller gathering places and parks that will be included in that. When this is all done, the, the creation of a public realm that interconnects, you know, between One Paseo and the community is the goal. That public realm will, again, take public experiences and interconnect them with the community and bring, you know, a human experience to this area. So, with that, we kind of go back to the, to the original community plan and the goal of, you know, a major unifying element, of pedestrian priority, connection in terms of walkways and bike paths. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to my colleagues who are going to go to the board, and they're going to talk to you about some of the specific proposals that, that we have to start implementing this connected community concept. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. And Mike and John, if you could join me up here. My name is Marcella Escobar-Eck. I'm a planner and landscape architect by training and practice, and I'm a part of the Kilroy One Paseo team. What we're going to be doing tonight, and as you could see, we're, to make sure that everybody in the audience can have the benefit of the close-up graphics that the board has here, the cameraman is going to be projecting the images up on the two screens, so we're going to be, as we zoom in, to talk about some of the enhancements that are being proposed in the community. Hopefully, they'll be able, you know, visually, to be able to read them up there a little bit more clearly. Just a little bit of orientation as to all the graphics that are up here right now. What we have here is the original 1975 North City West Community Plan that Mike and Frank referenced for you earlier. This is a map that shows the existing Carmel Valley facilities as they are today, just in case we need it as a reference point, in case any questions come up. What we've done here, and I'm going to try not to trip on these little guys, if you've seen occasionally hesitating, sorry, there's a couple little foot things here, but, by the way, the score was three to zero just a few minutes ago, in case anybody was wondering with the chargers. Pardon me? The chargers. So, this aerial graphic right here, what it does is it has several points keyed on the map that we're going to be talking about. It's an aerial of, keyed in area of the Carmel Valley Community Plan, so we didn't take the whole area, we tried to focus in on this section in here with some of the benefits that we're going to be talking about. This graphic right here shows most of the existing trail connections that exist within this focused keyed-in area of Carmel Valley. We're going to be talking about some enhancements that we're going to be proposing to some of the trail networks that already exist today. This key graphic that we're going to be talking about includes some of the trails that we're going to be talking about, and then we're going to be focusing on that public realm. And so, the graphics that we have over here and the graphics at the end represent the enhancements that are going to be made to the public realm. So, as Mike and Frank mentioned, one of the criticisms that we heard from detractors of, of the project, from board members, from people in the community, was that the project was too inwardly focused, that it, you know, whether you like it or not, and think the architecture is good or bad, that the project itself was really creating an island, and that the connections to the community weren't happening, and that people weren't seeing those. So, what we did was, we took a list of about 20 to 30 items that we've heard through comments that came in on the environmental document, comments that we've received through our website, comments that we've heard from the members of the planning board, as well as from members of the community, and comments that we've heard from the folks from What Price Main Street and some of the opposition. And so, what we did was, we really took a long, hard look at what could we do to really change that experience in Carmel Valley so that it's not just about the driver, that it is about the walker, the cyclist, the sports enthusiast, the nature enthusiast, all of those other things that occur within Carmel Valley that we couldn't just control, you know, within the project, but we really needed to start looking outward. So, where we started was at what we consider to be one of, one of the key main entry points to the community, which is the intersection right here off of the 5 and Delmar Heights Road. And what we did was, and you've mentioned that one of the concerns that you've pointed out is the fact that we're taking out some of the landscape median along Delmar Heights Road. So, what we recognized was that what you really feel right now, when you come in off of this pretty significant entry point into the community, is, where is that picture right now, John? Right here. You really have a sea of asphalt along that whole area. And so, we're proposing to actually add in a tree-lined median into this area, so it's over 500 feet of a tree-lined median that we're going to be adding in here, to really start changing the experience and the character of what it feels like to start driving into the community of Carmel Valley. And so, as we started looking at the opportunity that that median created, right now, and Victor, you've brought this up, that there's not really any type of sense of arrival that you've entered into the community of Carmel Valley, there's not any type of monumentation that tells you that you're entering into the community of Carmel Valley. And so, right now, the existing sign that most of you see out there is that, I don't know, maybe four-foot by six-foot blue and white sign that says you're entering the community of Carmel Valley, and you have one here as well as a little bit further on El Camino Real. And so, we're proposing that as a part of changing that experience of how you start coming into the community, that there would be additional monumentation created for the community, both at this location, as well as the location down here, I'm trying to make it challenging for the camera guy to figure out where I'm going, as well as the location somewhere down here, south of the 56 or right by the 56, recognizing, of course, that the community goes well beyond south of the 56. So, working with the community, obviously, it's not going to be something that looks like the neon sign that you see in Hillcrest, it's going to be something that's going to really respect the character ultimately of the community. So, as we started coming down the street, you saw the picture that Frank showed earlier of the mother walking with her child with the stroller. And what ends up happening right now, as most of you know, traffic moves pretty quickly and at pretty high speeds along Delmar Heights Road, and it's a fairly intimidating feeling when you're going through there as a walker, as a jogger, and even as a cyclist. So, we started thinking about what were the things that we could start changing, not just along the project edge that Mike is going to get into in a few minutes, but also along the north side of Delmar Heights Road. So, the situation that we have now on the north side of Delmar Heights Road is we have the, what's called a contiguous sidewalk. So, the sidewalk is right at the curb, at the edge of the traffic. So, you have the sidewalk, the bicycle lane, and then all of the traffic. So, we are proposing to change that pedestrian experience as you start coming down, not just on the project frontage, which we'll get to in a few minutes, but to change this whole experience and to make this a non-contiguous sidewalk, so that you now have a tree-lined street on both sides of Delmar Heights Road, and you now have a buffer from the traffic, the cyclist is, I'll talk about the experience that we're changing for the bicyclists, but really coming back in and replacing that feeling of being able to walk through your community and having that experience. One of the things that we also heard feedback from the bicycle community, and those of you that bicycle quite a bit, I know there are some of you on the board, many of you in the audience, I went to UC Davis, which is very much of a bicycle-friendly community, excuse me, I want to take this piece of tape off of my foot now. And if you recognize that when you have a Class II bicycle lane, which is the majority of what the bicycle lanes are currently in Carmel Valley, you have that seam in the road. So, as a cyclist, you're navigating traffic coming next to you on one side, possibility of a car turning, a car opening its door, any type of situation like that, but you also have that seam in the road. So, one of the suggestions that was made to us by folks in the bicycle community was to do what's called a seamless or continuous pour. So, along the property frontages, where all of the curbs are going to be replaced and provided for, we're actually going to be doing, it's called a monolithic pour, but essentially creating a seamless pour here, so that the bicycle experience now is much different. But it also creates a visual change, because it is, it's not asphalt, it's concrete. So, now, all of a sudden, the whole experience, as you're coming down as a pedestrian or as a cyclist, coming down Delmar Heights Road starts to change. You start to feel more like you are actually able to walk without feeling intimidated, you are actually able to bike without having all the added dangers that come with biking along busy streets. On the south side of the property, some of you have seen some of the presentations, but what we've done is really enhanced, so this is now a linear park. So, for those of you that drive through there every day, or possibly even walk through there, from where the curb is today, the setback is going to be anywhere from 50 to 70 feet in most cases before you even see a building facade. This is all going to be a linear park that connects with that greenway that's being added at the corner of the project over here, and you're going to have the experience of being able to have benches, obviously, trees, sitting areas, so it's, you have a linear park as you start to wrap around, a completely different feeling over on the north side. John, could you do me a favor, maybe you could add some of the things about the experience for the driver along?
Sure.
Delmar Heights Road?
As Marcella was explaining, the improvement of landscaping on the north side of the road, with the south side already being there, creating the additional landscaping in the medians as you come off the freeway, it, the, while the primary benefit of that improvement is for the pedestrian, it'll actually have a traffic calming effect to the motorist. It'll actually encourage the motorists to go slower. Most of you can experience, think about it. I didn't know I was so funny.
Let me add to that.
Well, as most of you know, when you get off the freeway at Delmar Heights Road, the motivation of the motorist is to speed up. He turns the corner and goes as fast as he can, and his motivation is to get going here so that he doesn't have to stop at High Bluff, and he's going to try to make it all the way down to El Camino Real. That's the, that's the experience we have today on Delmar Heights Road. The encouragement, the design has been, how do we get that car across the community as fast as they can? Because the motivation is to not have to stop. But if we can create an experience that'll encourage the motorists not to have to go as fast, but still get through the corridor, that opportunity will benefit the pedestrian and the bicyclist as well. And that is achieved using the adaptive traffic control system. There's been discussions through the various presentations where we are proposing to integrate and connect all the traffic signals from Interstate 5 all the way to Carmel Canyon, which is the intersection east and down the hill from the high school. They'll all be interconnected and linked together with a smart system that can do stuff that the traffic control systems today can't do, and that is count cars. And what they do is they're able to count both the total volume of cars that are stopped at a stoplight, but also figure out how long they've been waiting, and they can actually create an opportunity to platoon a group of cars to go through the corridor and potentially turn all the lights green as they go down the road. This has been implemented at various locations around the country, including San Diego County. The objective is that if it can recognize that the demand for the traffic is at a particular location as opposed to the next intersection, it can anticipate and just, and talk to each of the lights. So, it won't guarantee that you won't have to stop, but the number of stops that you might have to go through, through the corridor, would get reduced to at most one or maybe two. So, you wouldn't have to speed up trying to get the light, you would be given access to go through the lights, and perhaps at a lower rate of speed, and you feel the boulevard effect would be restored to Delmar Heights Road. Marcella?
John, do you want to talk about the, on the north, the traffic calming?
I can talk about that as well. Some of the comments that we've received have asked us to look at traffic calming measures on High Bluff Drive as you go north, anticipating that some cars would actually divert, instead of going east, they'd go north on High Bluff to go around. Those that live in this part of the community frequently will ask the police department to install a mobile radar detector and sign to tell people how fast they're going in hopes that that'll help slow them down. And while the sign is there, it actually achieves its objective. You've seen these radar signs, there's one on Delmar Heights Road as you go down into Delmar. If you go over the speed limit, it flashes and tells you you're going too fast. If you're going under the speed limit, it tells you what the speed limit is, but it announces to you and encourages you not to go very fast. We can convert that temporary-type facility into one of those permanent signs along the corridor, and we would look at other traffic calming measures. There's some discussion about converting one of the intersections that has yield signs into a three-way stop, and other measures that would be used to encourage traffic calming along that corridor. Does that help?
Thank you. Mike, could you maybe take us around El Camino Real and talk about the crosswalks and take us to the park?
Yeah, as Frank mentioned in his presentation, we talked about a string of pearls that ran along El Camino Real, a way of changing the nature of the street with public spaces that don't necessarily hinge on what happens inside, but hinge on a better environment for the pedestrian on El Camino Real or the driver on El Camino Real. And again, the same kinds of emphasis on landscaping, on pedestrian walkways, on the bicyclist, and I think those are critical. On the way over tonight, Frank and I were driving up here and we noticed that a bicyclist was driving on the sidewalk, because the bicycle lane was so close to fast-moving traffic that apparently the bicyclist felt it was in his best interest to get as far away from the bike lane and the traffic as possible. And our attempt here is to try to really define those areas, create a place where the bicyclist, the walker finds a pleasant experience, a place to stop and rest and enjoy the environment. If I can, I'm just going to jump back on something that made you all laugh when John said about the traffic calming on Delmar Heights and on El Camino Real. One of the things that's been proven lately is that faster going through a space like this makes you take longer to get through it. And that if you slow traffic down to a smooth-moving area, you can move more traffic through a space at a slower speed than you can if you have a higher speed and you don't calm the traffic. And one of the examples we have here, which is a little bit different, but it's in the Bird Rock area, La Jolla Boulevard, where we put in five roundabouts, took out a couple lanes of traffic, and have managed to move more traffic through that space safer than we did before. So, these are the kinds of things we want to look at, to really create a pedestrian experience, a bicycle experience, and really begin to make it easier for people to cross the street at the enhanced crosswalks and get into the project and really begin to feel that this is the town center that was originally envisioned.
Thank you, Michael. One of the things that we heard also, as we were going through the process, was, you're giving us all of these fees, facility financing fees, and as you know, many of those go towards park improvements and other improvements in the community, but specifically on the parks. Carmel Valley, although by city standards and other standards is parked and in some cases parked in excess in some areas, there's an extreme shortage of playing fields in Carmel Valley, because there's such an active community, so many schools, so many rec councils that use the playing fields, that there was this notion of, well, we're going to get all this money, but what are we going to do with it? We don't have anyplace else to be able to reinvest that money that we're getting. So one of the things that struck us is, we started looking at, again, focusing back in on this core area in here, and recognizing that as you start coming down El Camino Real, there really is a major civic area here, obviously with the rec center, the library, the police station there. But we also started looking at that park real critically and recognized that it could be so much, it could be enhanced so much and really repurposed if we could start reevaluating what are the needs in the community. So one of the things that we're proposing is to do the architectural and engineering work to be able to take a look at that park, right, the park. And as you heard Frank alluding to it earlier in his presentation, there are opportunities to create, there's a pretty large slope that kind of feeds up into it, to really start changing that experience and making it more of a continued gateway into that civic area there, which is a pretty prominent civic area, much like a Presidio Park or, you know, a lot of the other really nice parks that start coming up. So you actually start changing what the edge feels like and coming up into that area, but looking at the opportunity to repurpose that and to take the parking, not make it underground parking, but to actually make it almost like tuck-under parking, and then come in and cover the top of the deck of the parking with either a full-size regulation soccer field, some arena fields. We've also heard that there's a high demand now for cheer facilities and cheer practice facilities. So we recognize that this is really a tremendous asset that's completely underutilized. And so, we would be proposing to advance the architecture and engineering work on that so that the fees that do come from the project could actually be put to good use. And we thought-
Do you want to include the building of it?
The architecture and engineering of it. And we'll get to questions after we go through the presentation. So, doing that work and really looking at how then that whole experience, as you're coming down now, starts changing and gets punctuated by a really enhanced area into the community. Couple of other things Mike may have mentioned. So, we're proposing also to come in and change the paving pattern along some of the major intersections, again, to try and visually create a more inviting scenario for the pedestrian and some visual cues for the automobile. So we started looking at some of the trails that exist within the community. And again, we kind of focused in on a couple of the areas. So, we looked at a number of the trails. We actually looked at some of the trails in Neighborhood 8, which got a little complicated because of some of the environmental work that needed to be done there, but really looking at some of the missing trail segments that exist in the community. And one of the most significant missing trail segments that exists in the community is this trail that goes right here, and it goes underneath the freeway, underneath the I-5, and it's called the Civ Rep Trail. So this trail connection right here is included in the environmental document that Caltrans is doing for the I-5 widening. They've done all of the environmental work, but that trail hasn't had a champion. In the environmental document for Caltrans, it's actually slated for 2050, I think it is, before it gets constructed. And what we recognized was that there's really a need to have that trail connection as quickly as possible. And so, part of what we're proposing is to advance the trail connection. And what it does is, it really creates that major connection now that goes under the freeway, connects to major park-and-ride facility, for those of you that are familiar with it over here, and it creates that connection to the beach and to other segments of the trail. And then, to also complete a trail section that's missing over here, that's identified within the community plan, and it's currently a dirt trail, but to actually come in and finish it in the way that it was intended to implement, because that now starts creating that additional connection that does allow somebody who took the coaster to basically come back in, go through the park-and-ride, and ultimately connect to different segments of the community. So those are two major trail connections that we felt that we could champion advancing. The other thing, we've talked about this a little bit, the shuttle system, so I'm not going to get into that very much, but ultimately with the last phase of the project, we would be also proposing to do a shuttle system that would actually connect some of the key core areas, the employment center, and to some of the residential areas. The last thing, let's see, which one, what am I missing, John or Mike? I think, did I cover them?
I think you got it all.
I think I did.
Well, we can catch it in questions.
Okay. So Mike, why don't you wrap us up? Yeah, John and then Mike, if you could wrap us up and then-
All of these improvements, whether they be on Delmar Heights Road with landscaping improvements, pedestrian improvements, traffic calming improvements, the activity on El Camino Real coming down, the park improvements, the trail improvements, are all external to the project. You don't have to make one step into the project to enjoy this. This is improvements that are community improvements that would benefit the user regardless of where they go. If they're walking to the high school, they're walking to the Highlands, if they're going to the park, this experience would become a positive experience instead of a negative one.
Mike, before you wrap up, one last thing that I did forget, ow, sorry, was for the nature enthusiast, the San de Gito River Valley right now has the Birdwing Open Air Classroom Project, which they have funding for the construction from the county, but they are still missing some of the funding for some of the pre-construction costs. So, we would also be providing a contribution to be able to hopefully further the Birdwing Project into completion. So, with that, Mike, if you could wrap us up and then maybe we can go to some questions.
Thanks, Marcella. John, I want to make some closing comments. Unlike John, I'm not a resident in the community, but I have a personal stake, a personal interest. And maybe it's because of Ego, maybe it's because I've been a community planner and city planner in the city of San Diego for many, many years. And I think the project, as we've talked about tonight and presented it, and as John mentioned, some of these improvements, which really don't rely on even you going into the proposed project of One Paseo, really begin to activate the core and come to the point that the plan really called for in 1975 and many of the subsequent actions that were taken over the years. It really creates a space and a place for people. It's not about the size, it's not about the density, it never is, and it's not about the traffic, it's about the quality of the place. And we'll have, well, we can answer some questions about that. It's about the quality of the place, the enhancements that are made, that really begin to change those things that you're concerned about, such as traffic. And I'm really pleased that we have been able to present something that is really about the community and about the people that will live here. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to Frisco and then any questions that he might-
Can if we could get the lights back up?
So you guys are done?
Yeah. Thank you, Frisco. So we just want to take some questions.
Why don't we just take a two-minute break? The bathrooms are over here to my left outside, and so, I'm going to take two minutes to figure out what we're going to do for the rest of the evening.
Okay.
But just as a FYI for those people that are interested and may not know this, the project right now is still under city review. The city has made a determination that the DEIR will be recirculated, but not all parts of the DEIR will be recirculated, certain parts will be recirculated. The project has also been asked by the city staff to do an alternate study where the project has 600,000 to 800,000 square feet of a true mixed-use project. Clapping is not necessary. So that is a study that Kilroy will be doing as an alternate. So that will be part of, I'm sure, what will be recirculated. We have city staff here. She is only here to answer questions if the questions are asked of the board. She will not be taking questions from the audience or from the community. So that being said, we'll take a two-minute break so I can sort of figure out what the rest of the evening is going to do.